I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. And I want to let all of you know, this is our first forum in this format. So we'll have to just be kind of gentle with each other in case anybody makes any mistakes. But I do want to review some of our rules for you. First of all, the video of this forum will be available probably tomorrow. And the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area own the copyright of the video. And so if you use it or show it, it's important that you show the whole thing. You have agreed that you, your organizations, campaigns and supporters will not use the forum or any audio or video clips or transcripts for political advertising or other purposes. The League of Women Voters is an organization that does not support or oppose any candidate. And since this video is made by us, it's important to us that it remain intact. Tonight, we'll have two minutes to give an opening statement. I will call on each candidate and Rachel will be our timer. After opening statements, I will ask a question of each of you, and you will have 90 seconds to answer. I will rotate questions. I will rotate who begins each time. So please wait until I call on you. Rachel, do you want to show what the timer is going to look like so they have an idea of that to start?
So that's the 30-second warning. And then time's up.
Okay, so I think we're ready to begin. Kathy, you may start your opening statement.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Kathy Archer, and I'm running for one of the two open seats on the Claremont Unified School District School Board in the November election. Recent data from the Department of Education states that approximately 77% of public school teachers are female. About 54% of public school administrators are women, and less than a quarter of district superintendents and school board members are women. This fall, two experienced women are stepping down from our current Claremont Board. It would be my honor to fill one of those vacant seats to ensure continued female representation and leadership on the Claremont School Board. I've lived in South Claremont for 25 years. My husband and I have a 15-year-old daughter who's a sophomore at the high school. For the past 23 years, I've worked at Charter Oak High School in Covina as a history teacher. And throughout my tenure, I've held numerous leadership roles on campus. Prior to my work in education, I was a criminal defense attorney in Rancho Cucamonga. I was a member of the Measure G Steering Committee, which helped pass the bond in 2016 to repair and modernize CUSD facilities. I serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Claremont Educational Foundation and have worked on their grants, events, and SLICE committees. I'm passionate about public education and hope to bring my skills and experience to the CUSD Board. As a board member, I plan to work collaboratively with our community to enhance existing programs and champion new opportunities, and most importantly, to support students and their families and represent educators in our district. My focus throughout the campaign and as an elected board member is on four main priorities: educational equity, responsible fiscal management, community conversation, and safety and wellness. As a member of the CUSD Board, I plan to prioritize each of these areas and work for the best interests of all stakeholders in our Claremont educational community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you may go next. Bob, you need to unmute yourself.
That's going to be the phrase of 2020, "you're on mute." Thank you so much, Barbara, for hosting this, and thank you to the League. It's a real honor to be here with you tonight, and I'm a proud League member, so it gives me great pleasure to be among you. I grew up in Claremont and attended Sycamore School, El Roble, and Claremont High School. And I'm also a proud parent. I have a 12-year-old son and a 15-year-old daughter. I've been working with the district for over a decade now, starting with the Claremont High School theater renovation, and that led to the Sycamore School Governance Council and the installation of the Sycamore School Library. I also sit on the Sycamore School Equity and Inclusion Committee. At the request of Nancy Tresser Osgood, one of our current board members, I joined the Board of the Claremont Educational Foundation. With that organization, I've served as its president for four years, and I've led it through two multi-year strategic plans. I've been a consultant with Claremont After-School Programs and Claremont Heritage, and I currently sit on the Measure G Oversight Committee and the LCAP Parent Advisory Council. My background is in nonprofit management. I've served as a director of numerous nonprofit organizations, and I've also been a professor, and I currently work at a secondary school. My priorities for Claremont Unified include health and safety, financial management of taxpayer dollars, academic excellence, parent and community connection, and equity and inclusion. I have demonstrated through active community leadership these priorities in the past, and I look forward to continuing to do so as a member of the Claremont Unified School District Board of Education. Thank you again for the opportunity. I look forward to the dialogue this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, you're next.
Good evening, and I appreciate the League's invitation and the opportunity to talk tonight about education. My name is Chris Natikia, and I've lived in Claremont for 23 years with my wife and my daughter, who's a 14-year-old freshman at Claremont High School. I'm a college professor. I've taught political philosophy for 25 years at Cal State San Bernardino. I'm a city commissioner. I serve on the Community and Human Services Commission. I was on the school site council. I'm on the Local Control Accountability Plan Parent Advisory Committee, and I'm liaison to the city's Human Relations Committee. Finally, I'm vice president of my campus chapter of the California Faculty Association. I'm running because I want to stand up and speak up for Claremont students the same way I've stood up and spoken up for others throughout my career, whether it's to bolster social, emotional, and mental health support for students, strengthen critical thinking, address equity, or improve parent engagement. Years before I even began campaigning, I attended board meetings regularly and noticed something was missing. We hadn't had a community conversation about education for a long time. Sure, we've had conversations about taxes ad nauseam, but because we hadn't had two school board elections, none since 2013, we neglected education. I love Claremont, and so I vowed to run and conduct an issues-based campaign right from the start, not based on who I know or what conversations I'll hold. I wanted to drive a conversation, and I believe that I largely succeeded, whether it's on the need to lower the economic walls on entry into our community, to stabilize school funding, whether the district ought to be part of a larger citywide anti-racist project, on safely reopening schools, and the great increased need for mental health support. I look forward tonight to continuing my conversation together with you and the League.
Thank you. Our first question goes to Bob. You can unmute yourself. The question is, when budget cutbacks become necessary, describe the specific areas you think are the most and least important.
Thank you, Barbara. So, you know, 85% of the budget is related to people. And it's very, very difficult to make budget cuts without affecting people. But of course, that would be my priority. There are areas such as school site resource allocation. There are areas such as extracurricular transportation. But the other side of this is that we need to work actively to increase revenue for our school district. We need to be advocating for public school funding. We need to be advocating for a balance in the local control funding formula. And some of those things will also affect the ability for the district to operate without steep cuts. So it's my hope that we can find those balances so that we can avoid cuts to personnel, because those cuts are really what affect the student outcomes, and it's the student outcomes that we must protect first and foremost.
Okay, Chris, you're next. Same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Please.
When budget cuts become necessary, describe the specific areas you think are the most and the least important.
Well, I can give a set of guiding principles that I would use in making any decision about that, because if there's one thing that I've done throughout my life is that I've wanted to make sure that we stand up for the folks who are the least advantaged in the district and in society. So whatever those programs are that benefit our students and our families who are the least advantaged are the ones that I would want to make sure that we preserve first, because those are the ones who, those are the constituents and the parents and the students who are already impacted most negatively by structures that we see in place now. So I'd want to do my best to make sure they're protected. I'd also want to make sure that we look real hard at the revenue side of the equation as well. I've been out front of the Prop 15 ballot initiative right from the very start. I was at Assemblyman Holden's office last year lobbying for his support of the measure, and I'll be making phone calls in support of the measure as well. I don't think we should put that off the table. I think we could get $4.25 million if it passes. And I think this year, if any, is the best year to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Kathy, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question? We can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it took a sec. Sorry about that. I was trying to... So obviously, my priority is keep people employed. 85% of the budget in the district comes from people. But the most important thing is keeping teachers in the classroom and keeping programs in place and not taking them away from children. Obviously, my least important would be things that don't touch teachers in the classroom, trainings, transportation. As CUSD addresses current challenges and uncertainty, fiscal responsibility and conservative spending is going to be vital. You have to reduce costs without cutting staff, faculty, or programs. So that requires that reduction in expenses elsewhere, and hard decisions are unavoidable. Reducing costs such as transportation and the purchasing of supplies can help trim the budget while protecting district staff and faculty. Again, opting out of professional development conferences and training can reduce costs, saving money on registration fees and substitute teachers. Additionally, creative partnerships with local nonprofits like the Claremont Educational Foundation to fund supplemental programs will also be very helpful, because they will be critical to sustain specialized programs that make our educational offerings in Claremont so unique. And also, support from booster groups will be helpful as well.
Thank you. Question number two goes to Chris first. Chris, how do you plan to respond to constituents' needs when they address the board at school board meetings? And how do you balance board actions when various constituents' concerns, and various constituents, I mean teachers, parents, staff, compete with each other?
Yeah, this is, the challenge here is to act consistently with the Brown Act, which limits your ability to take action at a board meeting with, on anything that a parent says. Nonetheless, I do think that there's room for improvement in the way that the board interacts with the public. The Brown Act does not prohibit or bar board members from talking about an issue. It's just that they can't take action on an issue. And I think that there are opportunities here where board members can empathize with the public, acknowledge what they're saying, and refer the matter to staff so that staff can follow up and research it, much as we find at the city meetings. So that would be my main way of handling things on the board. I think that there's room for improvement here with acknowledging and accepting and hearing what happens at the podium.
Thank you. Kathy, this question is for you next. I'll read it for you. How do you plan to respond to constituents' needs when they address the board at school meetings? And how do you balance board actions when various constituents' concerns, teachers, parents, staff, compete with each other?
It's a hard, it's a hard question, because everybody has a variety of different issues that they want to bring to the board. As an elected official, a board member is bound to enact policy by ed code. One of my priorities in my campaign is collaboration and transparency. While it's the job of district staff to create the policy, it's really important as a board member to encourage open and transparent conversation. And it's really amazing to see how the public brings issues to the board during public comment, and they're sharing their feelings. Everyone is very invested in what's happening with children right now and with, you know, the decisions made by the district. We're all part of the same community, and we're all working towards my bottom line in my classroom, what's in the best interest of students. Nobody's ever going to be happy with 100% of the things that the board does, but the most important thing is we work toward the same goal: educational equity and success for all students.
Thank you. Bob, you're next. How do you plan to respond to constituents' needs when they address the board at school board meetings? And how do you balance board actions when various constituents' concerns, teachers, parents, staff, compete with each other?
Thank you, Barbara. So first off, I think it's really important. I've been attending board meetings for over 15 months now. I've attended all but one in that timeframe, and I take notes when people talk. And I like to follow up with people after those meetings, because we can't always have a conversation as a board member. I say "I." As a board member, if I were elected, I can't have a conversation from the dais, but I can have a private conversation afterward to get a deeper understanding of what a constituent or a stakeholder is interested in, and then refer to staff. But the other issue is, not all of these conversations have to happen at board meetings. We need to emphasize two-way dialogue. And to do that, we need to have conversations that occur outside the boardroom. So one of the things that I'd like to bring to bear is a set of community conversations in town hall format that lead to the recreation of the next strategic plan. We should be building the vision for Claremont Unified together. And by doing so in an open format, we can then collect a greater sense of community feedback and be able to take all opinions into consideration when we're doing so.
Thank you. Question three goes now to Kathy first. Kathy, from school shootings and active shooter drills to implicit bias from school resource officers, school safety means different things to different people. What does it mean to you? And how will you work to ensure every student, teacher, and staff member is and feels safe? Unmute yourself, please.
Is very personal to a lot of people.
You just started this now, so start again.
I'm sorry. This question's very personal to a lot of people, and it touches a lot of issues. And if elected, I commit to the best practice of investigating and openly discussing the SRO program, any program changes, any cuts, and any revisions before acting. I support the district's choice to fund a school resource officer, because school safety is very important to me. I am a classroom teacher. I have also had many conversations with teachers, school nurses, counselors, and students who rely on the SRO for school safety needs. The SRO documented in 2019 19 suicide and crisis interventions in CUSD. She counseled 193 students and 127 adults needing support. That speaks directly to student safety. While these services are important, if students feel marginalized and or profiled, that's equally important and needs to be addressed. I support a reframing of the SRO program to provide our community with an opportunity for reconciliation. I'm committed to participating in productive discussions about this and ensuring that the district advisory committee examines the SRO program. I support continued conversation about how district staff, counselors, teachers, students, and the SRO can collaboratively and respectfully create stronger relationships and more supportive campus communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you're next. I'll read the question again. From school shootings and active shooter drills to implicit bias and school resource officers, school safety means different things to different people. What does it mean to you? And how will you work to ensure every student, teacher, and staff member is and feels safe at school?
Thank you so much for the question. So prior to the pandemic, I was at a city council meeting in which we were discussing as a community whether or not to contract with the LA County Sheriff or stick with the Claremont Police Department. And I very, I was very outspoken on the fact that I wanted to keep with the Claremont Police Department for reasons such as active shooter. The response times are clear. They know our school. They know our community. And I desperately want to have a force in place that is able to protect and serve and respond quickly in need. In June, I began speaking with students at Claremont High School, and they expressed to me some concerns about the school resource officer. And I spoke with the faculty advisor for the Black Student Union. I spoke with teachers and administrators. I have subsequently also spoken with the Claremont Police. I've met with Chief Van Der Veen. I met with Paul Cooper, the former chief. And I've been collecting a lot of data on whether or not the school resource officer is effective. In having that dialogue, I know that there is room to grow, and there's room to improve. And I think that the key to your question is that we have to serve all of our staff and students. And if anyone is not feeling like they're well-represented, then we have to take that into consideration, because we have 6,800 students to think about and hundreds more faculty and staff, and they each deserve a voice to be represented on our school board.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, you're next. From active school shootings and active shooter drills to implicit bias and school resource officers, school safety means different things to different people. What does it mean to you? And how will you work to ensure every student, teacher, and staff member is and feels safe?
Yes, this is a very important question, and it's one that the newly-composed Racial Equity Committee is going to be investigating thoroughly. My hope is to support that committee's work and make sure that it does conduct a thorough investigation. However, I would be remiss if I didn't share that I have some preliminary views here based on conversations I've had with Claremont Disarms Hate, other students with the head of the Black Student Union at Claremont High School, and also with Officers Ganino and De Metz as well. I think that what needs to be done is we need to take a look at the various responsibilities of the school resource officer and go one by one, and think about which of those responsibilities are worth maintaining. I wholeheartedly support and said in open forums and other venues that the oversight of the active shooter drill, the lockdown drills, is absolutely essential and ought to be preserved. The students themselves want it as well. But as for carrying a loaded arm on campus, I don't think that's, that is something that can continue to be supported. I haven't seen any evidence that that keeps students safer. And besides, the school resource officer only patrols 10 hours a week at Claremont High School. We would have to multiply her time 40 times to get coverage across the district. For her salary, we can get two mental health counselors, and I think that is the best way of intervening in the kinds of issues that we've heard about before, the mental health issues. Prevention's the best intervention.
Thank you. Question number four goes to Bob first. And it is, organizations like CEF and CLASP work to establish equitable educational experiences for all students. What experiences have you had with these organizations? And how would you work toward their goals?
Well, I've been president of one of them for several years. And I can tell you that in that conversation, I was extraordinarily vocal in expressing the view that one of the magic things about CEF is that it provides funding equitably across the district to all schools. It doesn't fund it based on who raises more money. It doesn't fund it based on, you know, who has the greater need. It's equitable, and that's been a tenet of CEF for a long time. Then I've also been working with CLASP, and CLASP provides an equal access opportunity to all students who are in need. It does happen to fund a particular demographic of students that are higher need, and I really, really honor that. But nevertheless, any student that wants to reach out for CLASP services can do so. I've supported both of these organizations, not only with my time, but with my money, and I believe wholeheartedly in the mission they serve. This is an example of how the district can partner with the community. It's a very, very important partnership, and it's one that serves all of our students quite well. Use the example of technology and what we're going through right now. Those iPads were secured by an organization that was able to provide equal access across the district to technology. It's a great use of dollars, and it's a great partnership for our school system.
Thank you. Next is Chris. Organizations like CEF and CLASP work to establish equitable educational experiences for all students. What experiences have you had with these organizations? And how would you work toward their goals? Please unmute yourself.
So the question here is, what have I done to work towards their goals? And I've done a lot to work towards equity for students. So I'll give you several examples. One is, one, one, one goal of these organizations is to reduce achievement gaps. And one of the, one of the modes of doing that is to get ethnic studies into the curriculum. I've, I've lobbied for ethnic studies in Sacramento, and I've, I've gotten members of the California Faculty Association to visit state legislators in their district offices. That's one way of reducing achievement gaps, is to get ethnic studies into the curriculum. I've undergone implicit bias training myself. It's not easy. It's not comfortable. It's not meant to be. But that's the kind of thing that students and teachers are asking for in order to address achievement gaps. And finally, I've supported workers of various, in various industries and various sectors of the economy, and their struggles to achieve better, better pay, because they know, as we know, that a parent who could put food on the table working one job instead of two is a parent who has more time to spend helping his or her children with, with their homework. That's how we achieve, that's how we reduce achieving gaps.
Kathy, you're next, and I'm going to read the question while you unmute yourself. Organizations like CEF and CLASP work to establish equitable educational experiences for all students. What experiences have you had with these organizations? And how would you work toward their goals?
Well, I have proudly served on the Board of Directors for the Claremont Educational Foundation for the past four years. I've also been a donor since the Get on the Bus campaign, and I knew that it would be a great opportunity for service in the community after working on the Measure G School Bond Campaign. Being part of a group that enriches and enhances public school education for all students has been a truly rewarding public service experience for me. CEF provides block grant funding for all 10 school sites, and their financial support touches every CUSD student every year. I've worked on events, communications, and I'm a member of the SLICE Committee, and I also serve on the Grants Committee. And CEF is primarily volunteer-driven, and it operates with a low overhead, so all schools benefit tremendously from this. CLASP has supported district students for many years with tutoring programs, et cetera. And I've spent time with Jan Creasy, Director, and Board Member Jim Keith talking about how to provide tutoring for their students during the pandemic. As a board member, I'm committed to continued support of these organizations. I've always admired how CUSD Board members cultivate and foster district partnerships with CEF and CLASP and make time to attend their fundraising events, and I'd be proud to continue this tradition.
Thank you. Question number five, which is our last question, will begin with Chris. Chris, what role does policy play or have in the functioning of the board? And what is the board's role in the day-to-day operation of the district?
Well, the board's role in the day-to-day operation of the district is, we really just have one responsibility, and our responsibility is to oversee the superintendent, to make sure that he's, he's doing his job. Fortunately, we have a really good relationship now with the, with the superintendent, and so I'm committed to maintaining... And so I'm committed to maintaining that constructive, positive relation with him and his team, making sure that we can move forward, making, making sure that the Racial Equity Committee in particular can move forward constructively and be effective as well. I'm really committed to making sure that committee succeeds. As for policy, I mean, there are a bunch of policies. And, and our, our role is to make sure that we know them. And when we don't know them, if we inadvertently violate one of them, we just say, hey, wait a second. Okay, now it's been called to our attention. Let's make sure that we're consistent with policy. As anyone knows who's in an organization with lots of policies, there's a lot of them that exist in cyber space. And sometimes you just do something, you don't realize it. Someone calls your attention to it, and then you, and then you change course. I mean, those are the rules of the road, so to speak. And I'm committed to making sure that we, we stick to those time-tested rules as we move the district forward.
Thank you. Bob, you're next. What role does policy play or have in the functioning of the board? And what is the board's role in the day-to-day operation of the district?
Well, so I'd like to concur that the, the board's role is not to be involved in the day-to-day management of the district. That's the superintendent and the staff's role. So to the extent that there might be a problem in the day-to-day management, it would be the board's, it would be the board's role to take that up with the superintendent and then let him, in this case, dictate how he handles that with the staff and get back to the board. But in regards to policy, policy is the set of guidelines by which the entire district operates. And it leads to accountability. And the board's role is to ensure that we are being accountable for the policies that are set in place to ensure the student outcomes that we seek to, to produce. So it's not necessarily the board's role to create policy, but it is the board's role to oversee it and to make sure that we are in compliance and being held accountable for the actions of the district. And that is a sacred oath that every board member must take.
Thank you. Kathy. What role does policy play or have in the functioning of the board? And what is the board's role in the day-to-day operation of the district?
Obviously, similar answers. But the board's role is to enact the policies that are set by the, by district and to oversee the superintendent. The district has an amazing group of cabinet members who create the policies and the budgets that then get presented to the board. And the board serves as a watchdog to sort of, maybe not, that's not the right word, but sort of as an overseer to keep the district on track according to ed code and according to budget policies that are set by the state. Then the school board sets the vision and continues to hold the district accountable. And also, board members need to be familiar with policies and be able to thoughtfully ask cabinet about particular concerns that they have when things are presented at board meetings. And the bottom line as a board member is, is the district acting in the best interest of students? And are the board members acting in the best interest of students?
Thank you. We're, that's our last question. And so now you are each going to have one minute to make a closing statement. And I'm going to count on Bob to go first.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Well, first of all, thank you again to the League for hosting us tonight. This is really valuable. I, I want you to judge me based on my track record and my actions. I have been very involved in this community for a number of years. I have given of myself tirelessly to education causes and to community-based organizations. I'd like you to read more about my campaign at www.bobfast.com. And there you will see that I have broad support from over 350 community members. Those community members have given me the privilege of having their name associated with the campaign based on the trust and respect I have earned through my actions over that timeframe. Thank you so much for taking the time this evening to host us. I would be honored to serve this district as a member of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, you're next.
I'd like to thank Barbara Rachel and the League for this opportunity to address the League of Women Voters. It's been a real privilege tonight. And what I'd like to close by saying is that of all the candidates, I'm the only candidate who's a public education teacher who's been supported and endorsed, not by one teachers' organization, but by two. I've been endorsed by the Claremont Faculty Association and the California Faculty Association. I've got support from Claremont Change. They've endorsed me. The Los Angeles County Democratic Party, local UFCW 1428. They're right here in Claremont on, on Arrow Highway and two former mayors. So I've got, I've got this support. And I would be honored to serve as your board member and to continue these conversations. And I hope to obtain your vote as well. Please visit my website at chrisforcusd.org to learn more about me.
Thank you. Kathy, your closing statement.
To run for the Claremont School Board, it was a different time. I wanted to serve the community and our schools and continue the tradition of female leadership on the board. Mid-campaign, my perspective shifted and my call to serve was amplified. This pandemic is redefining our educational system. And I want to be part of the conversations around safety, wellness, resources, and how to support students facing over six months of potential achievement gaps. I want to continue to contribute to responsible fiscal management in a time of increasing budget challenges. I want to continue to foster the partnership between CUSD and its students and families through transparent conversation. I want to focus on educational equity in our schools, ensuring every student has access and support they need to achieve success regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, disability, or gender identification. I ask for your vote in the election as it would be my honor to represent the Claremont community. Please visit my website at kathyarchernumeral4cusd.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I just want to say, I think this forum has gone very well, almost better than I could have expected. I appreciate that, the level of respect that you all have and the amount of information you were able to give the public about your campaigns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you both.